Good afternoon. If I can have everybody's attention, I would like to call to order the August 8th, 2023 Work Session of the Board of Education to Order. Before us, we have an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
No.
A motion by Tom and a second by Mike, all in favor. Unanimous. If we could all stand, we'll have a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I hope everybody's had a good start to the school year. I have seen some of you smiling, so I know it must have been okay. And now we will have Mr. Young tell us about his leadership development programs and why all these lovely people are here.
You don't hear anything about the strategic plan tonight, do you?
I do not.
That's not on yet.
That's not on the agenda.
Is that better? All right. Well, per your request, I am pleased to provide you an overview of the work being done by our Leadership Development Department. And our work, this will be the only mention I make of the strategic plan tonight, Ms. Light. But this presentation aligns to all elements of our strategic plan as well as all four board goals. It's about what we're doing to prepare our leaders for all of our schools, and all of those elements of your goals in the strategic plan apply. Our team, our leadership development team, consist of veteran leaders who've spent time as principals and APs and teachers in their illustrious career. And all of them are committed to our mission that we have as a leadership development department, and that's to prepare competent, confident leaders for Forsyth County schools. And it really gives me the blessing of being able to work with some of the most knowledgeable, wise, and effective people in our system's history. And just because I mentioned wise and history, I'm not making any age references, but we're really excited, really excited to have some wisdom at our backs. So before I begin, let me introduce the members of our leadership development team. First, Joey Perkel. He heads up our Class A program, which, as you know, is with our classified leaders, developing them. We're going to present that down the road in another work session, the details of that. Joey's also instrumental for getting our Aspiring Principals program going, and he is partnered with on that by Sherri Black. Sherri's here. So the two of them take our Aspiring Principals program, which takes APs or assistant principals who have at least three years' experience as APs in our system. And that's an application program that if they feel they're ready to give it a shot to become a principal, and their principal thinks they're ready, they go through a very rigorous application program. Joey and Sherri have put together through the years a task force made up of veteran sitting principals, and they go through those applications and a really tough interview process, and they get it narrowed down to the field that makes up the aspiring principles. Terry North is with us. Terry, are you out there, Terry? Yep, Terry's here. So Terry is overseeing our LEAD Academy. Our LEAD Academy is their rebranded Aspiring Leaders Group, and that takes teacher leaders, folks that are in positions in this building, those who aspire for more formal leadership. So maybe a teacher leader who wants to become an assistant principal one day, or an AA, or even an athletic director, or department chair. This gives them some basic leadership training. And it's, again, as I'll show you in a minute, it's what we've been able to develop is some common themes guided by our leader profile. So those were the three that we started out with, and then, and I would also say that all three of these folks work with our new administrator onboarding, which is our first year principals and our first year APs, and they provide one-on-one coaching to them throughout their first year, which has been, which has been really, really an awesome support system for our new folks. I'm very grateful that we were able to add to our team this year Dr. Cindy Stallone. Dr. Stallone's out here. So in addition to providing us legal advice every day, she will be providing some much-desired one-on-one support and some group support to our veteran principals. We do such a great job with our folks that are preparing to be a principal, and such a great job with those who are in their first year, that we've realized that we need to expand that. And so the next person I'm going to introduce in a second is handling our second, third year principals. Well, as we did all this stuff, the veteran principals are like, we could use a little love and support and professional learning above and beyond, too. And we're really grateful that Cindy's going to provide that. Really excited that for our Year Two and Year Three principals, Leanne Rice, who is here with us, Leanne is, as part of her dissertation, is developing a Year Two and Year Three novice principal model that I will get her to share with you down the road, the details of that, but very excited. She's working with Terry on that. And then lastly, really excited that for our aspiring principal graduates, who are still waiting to get their shot at the principalship, we don't want to just leave them hanging after they had their aspiring principal development, and so we have what's called our AP Plus, Aspiring Principal Plus program. And this year, we've got Derek Hershey and Polly Tennis recruited to lead that. Derek is here, and is Dr. Tennis here? Oh, there she is, right there. So that's our, that's our team. That's the wise veterans that I talked about in the beginning that were really excited. Tonight, we're just going to talk about, if you see the screen, we're just going to talk tonight about aspiring principles, A to A, and AP Plus. And rather than go through with you the details of what those programs are, we would invite you anytime we have those in session, anytime you'd like to come and sit in on a session for that, we would love to have you. They would love to see you there, so we can get the dates to you for all those. What I talked about with our development team is, rather than me rambling, you could probably get a lot more out of this hearing from folks that have gone through all these programs. So without further ado, they are going to talk about these three programs and our NAO. They're going to probably talk about some common themes that you'll hear tonight, which is the cohort experience, something designed very intentionally, the one-on-one coaching, and the thing that has given us coherence, so that no matter who we're developing, they're hearing a lot of the same messages, and that's really all the tenants of our leader profile. That's our North Star. That's what guides us as we go through this. So that's sort of the foundation. I am going to ask, let's see, who's up first? Kristin Glass from Pools Mill, and we got Priscilla from Ottwell, and Aaron Archambault from West, but they are going to kind of lead you through their experiences. All yours, Kristin.
Hello. Well, as the three of us were talking about this presentation and coming to talk to you today, some common threads came out from our time in all of these programs. And really, when we talked about the growth and development that we feel like we've experienced, evolution was the word that continued to come to mind. And so it was evolution in our connections, evolution in our thought, and evolution in our confidence. So that's what we want to share with you. When I really reflect back on my time in all of the programs, so much of it was about the connections and the relationships that I made. So each one is cohort-based. So who I was with, which colleagues I was with for aspiring principles was different from AP Plus, and that was different from New Admin and A to A. And the importance in that is I got to meet people from all different levels in different schools and colleagues that I may not necessarily have interacted with, and the growth and development that the coaches and the mentors were leading us through really caused us to have to think deeper. And you were going through a lot of vulnerable phases as you were growing, and so we really became more like a family. And so now each of those cohorts are a bigger network for me that I can contact if I have a question, or if something's going on at my school and they know about it, they're reaching out to me, and we check on each other, and we take care of each other like a family. The mentors that we receive in the programs are the experienced principals throughout the county, and so that links us up with different principals who we may not have had connections with prior. And that helps us to really see a different perspective. I know I'd get to go see like the high school, the middle school, and all of that really helped me in the elementary school to have new ideas and to think differently. And then the coaches, those have been critical. So they have been wonderful to come in, and they'll sit with you, they'll help be a thought partner, they would think through with us, and then they'd really push us. I distinctly remember going through some of the leadership dilemmas in aspiring principles and thinking I had an answer to it, and Sherri Black going, but give me more. What else? Or what about this perspective? And those were the things I needed in order to shift from AP thinking to principal thinking. And the coaches were also really important that year in AP Plus. I went through aspiring principles, and it wasn't my time yet for a principalship. But having those coaches there in AP Plus to say, you know, here are the things that you can work on, or here's new experiences that you can get, and just knowing that the district was still pouring into me and really believed in me, even though I didn't get that principalship that first time, made me confident enough to keep going forward and to keep trying for it. And then the district office staff, a lot of like the associate superintendents in the assistant principal role, you don't necessarily interact with them one-on-one that often. And so through each of these programs, we had opportunities to meet with them and talk with them, and they kind of get to know us at our core and what our core beliefs were, and start to build that trust amongst each other. And so definitely last year in that first year as principal, when I had a question, I didn't know what to do, or something happened and I wasn't sure, I would call them. And whether it was the first time I called them or the fifth time I called them that day, they would answer the phone, and they would talk me through it, and they would help me. And so just having the confidence to know that I could call them really made a big difference. And I'll say that just getting to know them, what they always said was, the principalship will be just as lonely as you let it be. And so when you're the only principal in the building, you really have to make sure you don't let it be lonely. And through these programs and the cohorts and all of the network that I've built, it hasn't felt lonely a single day. But you don't have to take our word for it. We asked some of the other principals that have gone through it, some of the ways that they have evolved in relationships, and this is what they have said.
And so the picture that you see here to your right is the cohort that we like to affectionately call the Grade Eight. This is the cohort of principals who were named principals in the year 2223. So we are all second-year principals, and what I'd like to talk a little bit about tonight is our evolution of thought. The role of the assistant principal is a very tactical role. It's a role that requires a lot of responsibility, a lot of duties, and quite a bit of execution. But the role of the principal is different. It's a strategic role. It's a role in which you've got to think. Imagine yourself with a chessboard in your mind, and all the pieces are very important, but all of the pieces have to work together and complement one another in order to achieve and arise to that goal. And so having the time during aspiring principles to begin to have that evolution of thought and begin to develop that habit of mind, to begin to think like a principal, and to begin to change your perspective, was invaluable. And I would really say that the beginning starts when you're accepted into that aspiring principles program. To have a cohort of people, and for our cohort, we had a cohort of nine, but to have a cohort of people where you can travel through and go through this journey with is unbelievable. They're going through the same thing that you're going through. They have the same questions that you have, but you're not alone. You have coaches, you have mentors, you have district staff that come and meet with that cohort and share their perspective and share their experience. And they, too, still have questions. Year Two, Year Three, Year Five, Year Ten principals are still having the same questions that you might have that's come from you. You've got a group of people that are there that can be your support system. Like Kristin mentioned, at any time, you might have a question, you can pick up the phone and call. We have a group text that has been going on for almost two years now, where we share different ideas and theories and things to put in practice. The aspiring principles program really also prepares you for that principal interview. I can't tell you how prepared I felt to sit in a room full of people, to talk and share my experience, my philosophy on education. And when you get that call, you begin to assume that role. The A to A program, when you move into that program, you begin to take those theories and that thinking and start putting it into practice. Through A to A, we started talking about our core values. Who are you as a principal? You begin to start walking your hallways as an assistant principal, but thinking like a principal. What would I do? How would I approach this? This scenario and situation has come up. What do I stand for? What are my core values? How am I going to present myself to my faculty, to our faculty, to our community for the first time? And so A to A really helps you to begin to develop what those core values are, but again, in that cohort and supportive experience. And then your first year as a principal, through new administrator orientation, we all have a coach and a mentor. And each of those coaches and mentors are current principals or retired principals. So to have an opportunity to pick up the phone and ask a seasoned principal a question is unbelievable. We also met once a month. So to have those mentors and those coaches come to your school and talk through different things that you might be experiencing was invaluable. But don't take our word for it. Again, testimonials from different principals that have experienced aspiring principles, A to A, and the new administrator orientation.
While you guys are finishing reading, I'm just going to say I'm not going to hold anything against Mr. McCollough wearing an E-shirt during today's meeting.
I didn't see your name on the agenda, or I would have wore the white shirt.
They did, they did.
So I'm here to talk about the evolution in confidence, and you know, the first part of starting to think like a principal, really starting to see yourself as a principal, it really starts with that aspiring principles program and where you kind of get introduced to a lot of things about the principalship. As an assistant principal, we're exposed to a lot. We are very tactical, like Priscilla had talked about, but you really don't know what it's like to be a principal until you're in that seat. Well, the benefit of this aspiring principles program is it starts to get you into that seat little by little, and it starts to put you into those situations, those dilemmas that we talked about. You know, those are real situations that principals had dealt with, and as an assistant principal, we don't ever deal with that stuff. But to start talking through them, reading through them, start to pick other principals' brains about, okay, what would you do? And then put the challenge on us. If you were the principal in that seat, what would you do? How would you handle it? If you're going to have a conversation, how would you have that conversation with that person? That's an employee, that's a person. Yes, so it starts to get that train of thought, but it's getting the knowledge of what it takes to be a principal. It's all day, every day. And as an assistant principal, you can kind of decompress sometimes at night and kind of disconnect. Can't always do that as a principal. So it starts to get you ready for that, with that high level of knowledge you start to gain. As you transition in and you're named, you start to talk about your core values, your why. Why do you want to be a building leader? Why do you want to lead a community? And that's a big question. Going through aspiring principles and A to A, we start to get challenged about your core values. Who are you as a person? Who are you as a leader? What type of leader are you going to be? And those challenging situations, those tough situations, who are you going to be? Are you going to be a leader who cowers and runs away? Or are you going to be someone who steps up to the plate and leads the people that you're in charge of? And knowing your core values, it really hits hard in A to A. After you've gone through aspiring principles and you go to the A to A, and it starts to become more of a reality that you're about to be a principal. Whether you're named in February, March, or July, you're about to become a principal. And so you got to start really knowing who you are, because life happens fast, and these things start coming at you very fast as a principal, and you got to know who you are, you got to know your core values, and you got to know, one former principal used to tell us in aspiring principles, you got to know what you're going to get up out of your seat for. And if you don't know that, that's going to be a very hard job being a principal. And so that A to A program, really diving into your core values and who you are as a person, is, it just really gets you prepared. It also leads to a lot of self-awareness and trust in self, knowing who you are, knowing who you are as a leader, how you're going to treat people in those challenging situations, whether it's the first day of school, whether it's the last day of school, summer. We deal with a lot, and we deal with a lot of challenging situations, whether it's a medical situation at 4:15 PM at a middle school, and you got to decide whether to release buses or go into a full medical lockdown, whether it's a threat situation, and you got to decide what you're going to do. Are you going to go into Code IL? Are you going to do this? You're going to do that? Whether it's not being able to find a kid on a bus somewhere, those are things that, you know, that come your way very fast, and you got to know who you are. And in those situations, when you make decisions as a principal, we get challenged, obviously. People challenge the decision we make, but they don't just do that, they challenge who you are as a person, they challenge who you are as a leader. And if you don't trust yourself and have that self-awareness, it can eat you alive pretty quickly. And these programs, aspiring principles, A to A, and even the new administrator meetings as we're going through that first year, we're talking with each other about how to do it, it gives you that self-awareness, that trust that I'm making the right decisions and I'm doing the right things. It also helps you execute. So in those situations, you know who to call, you know what perspectives to consider, you know who you need to go to, you know, who, okay, who's going to help me in this situation, or who can I call at the district office? It gives you that confidence and ability to execute, so that way you always know you're doing what's best for the kids in that building and the community as a whole. Because again, you know, that's one of the things you learn, is you're not just serving a school, you're serving an entire community. So you need to consider all those different perspectives. And the biggest benefit of these programs, we heard a lot, is don't be, when you become a principal, don't be the assistant principal anymore, right? Think like a principal, don't be the assistant principal, don't answer the radio first when it calls. We had the fortune of having this transition period with these programs, to where we could start to change our mindset, to change our approach. Unfortunately, I don't think people previous before us had that ability. You went right from assistant principalship and ended in May to right to principalship in July, and you didn't really have that transition period. These programs provide you that long transition period where you can really shape everything and shape who you are as a leader. And just like the other, we've got these testimonials from people that we went through the programs with, that can talk about and share their experiences with the opportunities, the confidence building that it had in just really identifying our leadership qualities and who we are going to be as a principal.
We can give them a round of applause.
I agree.
No, I was just, we did unintentionally realize at the end of it that it all connected to safe, connected, and thriving, and we clearly believe that as a district, not just for our students and staff, but for the leaders. And so we're just grateful that our district pours into the leaders and helped us to develop in this way. So thank you.
Don't go anywhere. Do you have questions for these guys at all? Do you have any questions about any of the programs or?
So how was the first year? None of the schools burned or anything, so that's good.
No, no, really.
We're back for year two.
Yeah.
So you're back for year two, right?
Yeah, so we're back for year two, absolutely. We're back for year two, and again, I mean, that cohort experience, we just really can't speak enough about the support with the cohort experience, the support from the district personnel, the support from the principals that came to speak with us and share their experiences with us, and just have coached us along the way. That's still happening, right? Like, we've got a Year Two Principals meeting on Thursday. And so it's not just as you're aspiring to be a principal, it's not just as your first year principal, it's a continuation, it's an investment in your growth as a leader in this community. And so really, it empowers us to want to turn around and do the same thing, not just in our buildings, but within our own communities as well. We want to build that leadership capacity. We want to inspire the teachers who then turn around and inspire the kids.
I think one of the great things, too, is first-year principals, you know, we have to make a lot of calls, ask a lot of questions, but never have we ever felt bad about calling anybody, you know? And I think that's great, is that we have that support system that says, no, we've been through two. Even though we think we're the only ones who have ever encountered that or had to make that phone call, we have other people said, no, this happened with me. Did you think about this? Or did you ask this question? Or did you talk to this person? And it just gives us, it helps so much. And so that Year One, when you ask, how was Year One? Year One was great. It really was.
There are so many times in Year One that I thought, oh, that's why we did that inspiring principles, or that's what they meant by that, or, oh, I get it now.
So what was the most interesting moment of Year One?
Interesting?
That you can talk about.
That won't make you cry.
I don't know if I could talk about it.
You know, I will say this, there's not a time that I called a seasoned principal or someone at the county office and asked a question and wanted to pick their brain, that they didn't sit and take 15, 20, sometimes even 30 minutes to talk through the situation with me. And I really sat back and started to reflect on that and think to myself, they're modeling for me what I need to be doing in my building and in my community. So each time I have a conversation with someone, my attention is to them, my attention is to the situation in front of me, my intention is to talk through, ask the questions, listen. And so I think maybe that was, for me, an interesting thing. You're modeling with intentionality what leadership looks like.
You know, working in the private sector, we don't have this.
Yeah, we don't have this.
And see, it's so special in what we do here, being connected and being open. As Dr. Bearden always says, we're in a people business, and we always support that, and that's something special. And they wonder why we do as good as we do. Well, you know, they call us school board snobs sometimes. We'll go to our association meetings, and they'll say, where are you from? We say Forsyth, and they're like.
They all roll their eyes.
And they don't even listen if we have anything to say.
Yeah, they think it's a lot of different reasons, but it's because of the people. And I look back at the leaders that are teaching, and I think back on all of those, having been around 19 years now, I've seen a lot of them go from principalship to administration and worked with them personally, you know, even at a school level. So it's kind of like, it's really cool to see it come full circle, and we learn what we learn, and the leader profile was a big deal, just like our learner profile was. What is the end in mind? What is that thing we need to start create? And if we grab a hold of that and really embrace it and honor it, and not just throw at it, a lot of times, private sector will throw this work at it, but y'all are really living it and actually doing it and calling it, and that's special. So that's all I can say.
Yeah, and I just want to thank you. I mean, I was just thinking the word ownership, like you all just took on full ownership of your role, you know, before you started being principal, you wanted it, and then you've committed to, you know, the work and the time that it takes. And you made an interesting statement, you know, when you're a building leader, you can't really turn it off, right? Because it's yours, and it's on your shoulders, it has the full weight for the entire year for however long that you're serving. So I just want to thank you. I know one of your principals of the Grade Eight is Dr. Jay, and so my third graders had a little bit of a struggle at the beginning, and just, I mean, I looked to her, I'm like, what do I do, right? And so I think as parents, that's what we do. So I appreciate what you all do, and thanks for stepping up.
Yeah, you guys are truly community leaders, and I know the three of you are in District One, and I know District One really loves you guys, so thank you for what you do. Maybe sometime there'll be like an aspiring school board member.
I don't know any of those.
I just want to add a couple of things. We have 15 principals in their first or second year right now, which speaks to the importance of growing our own. And this is my 10th year serving as superintendent, and in those 10 years, we have only hired one candidate from outside of Forsyth County schools for a principalship, and it's not because they don't apply, they do. And it's not because we don't interview them, we do. It's because our leadership programs so prepare our staff to make that next step. And we know if they are graduate from some of these programs, that they're prepared to take that role as a principal in Forsyth County schools. And so kudos to Mitch and Joey and everybody in part of Leadership Development, Terry and Sherri and everybody else. They just do a tremendous job of preparing our leaders to advance, because we're going to need, we continue to grow, and we're going to have people retire, and we're going to need to make sure we keep a very strong bench strength. And I say to principals, you guys probably remember me saying this to you when I offered you the job, the competition for a principalship in Forsyth County is fierce. It is tough. Kristin mentioned, you know, you apply, you go through the interview, and you don't get it. How do you handle that? And one thing I always look at is how they do handle that. Are they going to continue to pour in and make sure they're prepared to make that next step? And just could not be more proud of the three of these guys and the elite, I call them Elite Eight from last year, and the seven new ones we have this year, they're going to do a great job because they were so prepared because of the leadership development program. So thank you, guys. Did a wonderful job tonight.
Thank you.
So I'm going to step out of the way, but I'm going to take the mic with me and have you come down. What I would like to introduce each of you guys to tonight are the folks that are in our pool, our Forsyth County pool, to become principals when we have vacancies. And so we've got four members of our AP Plus, and then we've got 10 this year in the aspiring principles program. And so I'm just going to have you come down, I'm going to call them down so you can look them in the eyes and welcome them to their future. So if you want to get ready, I'm going to call you in the order they're up here. But I'm going to start with AP Plus. So TJ Meniskalco from Hendrix Middle. And we've got Jill Short from Coming Elementary. Liz Tuck from Piney Grove. And Tracy Winkler from Denmark High. And in this year's group of aspiring principals, who are really right in the middle of their cohort experience, we'll start out with Courtney Beach from Kelly Mill. Then Rachel Dooley from Matt. Rob Dugan from North Forsyth Middle. Mitch Ruzinski.
Mitch Rosinski from, it says Little Mill, but that's not right. What's that? At Lakeside now. And Liz Rushton now at Lakeside. Kelly Skyler from Lambert High. Jennifer Swaim from Mashburn. Michael Vork from Sonny Elementary. Larry Waddell from East High, she appreciates that shirt, Mr. McColl. And Kim White from Hendrix Middle. All right.
That was nice. You know, we may not remember all their names, but at least we have a face now when you talk about somebody. I'm so glad to meet all of you and have a, maybe not a face, always remember the name, but at least a face.
All right, we go from the feel-good portion of the meeting to the.
Yes. Onto the redistricting timeline.
Yes, to the redistricting plan and timeline. All right, well, good afternoon, I've got my script here. So I really, all jokes aside, I'm very excited to share with you that we are on track for the opening of our newer, larger Midway Elementary School to open in August 2024. Though we're just starting the school year, the time has arrived to start planning for next year. And a big part of that is addressing our facility capacity needs and challenges, and we do that tonight through the process of redistricting. So as part of this process, we would like to propose a plan and a timeline for your consideration in hopes that at next week's board meeting, we're hoping that you would vote to approve this plan and timeline. So here is our proposal. For this year's redistricting, we really have two objectives, two objectives that this whole thing hangs on. One is that we are trying to relieve overcrowding at several elementary schools. And our second objective is to populate the new Midway Elementary School. And this year's plan that we propose to you, we do not anticipate adjusting any high school or middle school lines this year, nor do we anticipate adjusting any existing feeder patterns in this go-around. Another part of this plan is that the elementary schools that we project will be impacted by redistricting. Our Big Creek Elementary, Brandywine, Haw Creek, Kelly Mill, Mashburn, Midway, Sonny, and Vicory Creek Elementary. Of course, this will be part of our proposed plan as we start to look at maps and get public feedback, and you have a chance to look at plans that we come up with. Obviously, everything stands to change before you make a final vote, but that is what our initial proposal will include, those schools. We also would like to propose that we would allow the students and their siblings enrolled in the dual-language immersion programs, DLI, at Brandywine, Kelly Mill, and Mashburn, be allowed to stay at their current school so long as the DLI student is enrolled. And hopefully, if things will work out, then we would also be able to try to provide transportation to those students for DLI. We also would like to propose in our plan that we would allow rising fifth graders and their siblings to remain at their existing school for one year, for one school year, so long as the parents are willing to provide transportation. That's been the traditional caveat that we've had on staying behind in those cases. In both cases, parents would have to complete an out-of-district waiver application prior to the November deadline. And the final thing that I'm gonna throw in there that I'm sure that you'll get some feedback on, but this is based on safety planning and traffic patterns, but we will propose in this plan that the Midway Elementary School be moved from a late start time to an early start time. And that's, obviously, sits right there on the campus with Denmark. So that's really gonna be a necessity. Again, all these plans would take effect in the 24, 25 school year. And then here, let me just throw up for your review, and you'll have access to this, but this would be the timeline that we would look at. Obviously, we're here tonight presenting a draft of this in hopes that you would approve this next week. And if you do, then we kick in high gear with putting together draft maps, and we'll collect online feedback. We'll present a draft map to you on September 12th, and then we'll put that map out there for the public to look at and give their feedback. We will host a public forum with people giving their feedback of the draft that Forsyth Central has generously offered their auditorium up. Volunteer or voluntold, I'm not sure. Jennifer handled that for us. At the October 10th meeting, we'll discuss the public input and any additional reviews from the staff or recommendations on any proposed changes. And then, our hopes are that on October 17th at that meeting, we would approve the elementary school map for the 24, 25 school year. And when that happens, actually, even prior to that happening, we're gonna open the out-of-district application a little bit earlier this year because of the early allotment schedule. But then certainly after a map is approved, we would expect that families will hit that hard for their DLI students or their fifth graders. And of course, communication of this is key, and you've got in front of you all the different ways that Jennifer and her department will be putting the map and recommendations out there. Any questions at this?
The only thing I wanna say is that the DLI program, that is something that we did back in 2020 when we redistricted for Paul's Mill. And the reason why we did it then was because it's a commitment, it's a five-year commitment for these students and for these parents. And for us to go through redistricting and remove them from that program once they've already decided they wanna be part of it, we felt as a board at that time was not right. And I know I've gotten some feedback recently from the community about it, but I think that was the right call. And I think it's the right call to do for those families in that program moving forward. So I hope we continue to do that.
One question, Mitch. Some of the elementaries that you listed on there, if I'm not mistaken, generally we're seeing a K-5 trend of lower enrollments, and I believe some of those listed have even lost allotments this year. How does that get considered in this redistricting?
Well, without getting too far ahead, I think what you would look at on that is if you're looking at, there's a trend in two different parts of our county. One part of the county where you see an elementary trend going in one direction, and another part of the county where it's going in the opposite direction. And so, the redistricting process would be, and some of those schools would be, the shift where we're sitting at maybe 115 or 120% capacity to a school that may be at 70% capacity, if and where we can do it in a safe manner, and the timing and the roads and everything line up, is that's where you may see a shift where we would take someone from one part of the county that's booming and try to shift them to a part of the county that is kind of trending in the other direction.
So generally, in my part of town, we're seeing lower enrollments. I know Big Creek, I'm pretty sure I might get this wrong, lost some allotments. So the idea would be to backfill them or to?
So yeah, yeah. And it's hard to do without having some visual aids, but when we have a chance to sit down and look at a map, that will be one of the things that we put out there for you to look at for sure. Yeah, yep.
And it's also important to include anybody it could possibly affect on that list, if you can, so people aren't caught by surprise. And I do wanna just reiterate one thing, this is a draft of the timeline, not a draft of the maps. So people don't think this is the draft.
No, and I'm glad you say that, Ms. Light, because, you know, we're constantly looking at Matt Wark and Brian Carlisle, Greg Pruitt, and I are constantly looking at trends and looking at the numbers to see where they are. And what we looked at even a couple of months ago and what we're seeing right now may not be 100% in line with where it was a few months ago. So, you know, we wanna get, as close as we get to this timeline, we wanna have the most accurate reel-to-time numbers we can before we make any recommendations to you. And that's why I kinda am apprehensive to go into too much detail, because that's constantly shifting. But to Ms. Light's point, the ones that we think may be affected, we wanna get that out there so there's no surprises. Yeah, yeah.
And we don't vote on it, do we?
No.
We just leave it on the table.
You'll vote on the timeline next week.
All right.
All right.
Anything else? Does anybody have any future agenda items?
I have a couple of things.
Okay.
So, one thing I'd like to see when, and both of these are conditioned with when the time is right to get them on the agenda. I'd like to see if we can do some type of study or committee or whatever the format is, but to evaluate some things we can do to alleviate the burden for teacher housing, whether that be a tax credit or any other out-of-the-box solutions to see if we can't make it easier for teachers to live here. I know that a big challenge to our recruiting and retention is the cost of living here. So that's one thing I'd like to see us add. And then the second one, we received with this year's budget, a $50,000 per school grant for school safety. So when the time is right, I'd like to see if we can have school safety come in and let us know the game plan and the community know the game plan for this.
Okay. Both of those are great ideas. We definitely can make that happen. And I know Derek is here tonight, and that's one conversation we've been having a lot this year, just brainstorming some ideas about the whole housing issue. So I think the timing on that is really good. We obviously are going to wanna have conversations at both the city level and the county level and bring other folks to the table, but I think the time is right to start having those conversations. I don't know what the answer is, but I think we need to talk about possible solutions for sure. So both of those are good.
Anything else, anybody? Okay, do I have a motion to go into executive session for personnel, Lynn, and advice from our legal counsel? Motion by Tom and a second by Lindsay, all in favor?
Thanks for being here tonight. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all for coming.